This meeting come to order, Corker Savage and Corn.
Dee Perkey-Pile.
Here.
Ray Seller.
Here.
James DeVito.
Here.
Terry McLung.
Here.
David Mitchell.
Here.
Nikki Schneider.
Here.
We have six.
All right, let's stand for the pledge, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all. Thank you. All right, that brings us to approval of the agenda.
Move to approve.
The second, Mr. Mitchell.
On the agenda tonight, we have under new business number four, vacating, and since that includes the director of parks and some of the public, could we move that up possibly? To say after public comments or somewhere higher?
Is there a second on that?
Yeah, I'll second, but which number?
New business number four, vacating Rock Street.
That's number three.
Number three.
Number three is Eighty Mountain.
Oh, okay, here, I've got another one.
Am I looking at the wrong agenda?
No, he's looking at the wrong one.
Who is the number one unfinished, is that what you're saying, David?
Yes, it could be, please.
I'm sorry, Mr. Mitchell, where did you say you wanted it?
Could we do number one under unfinished?
Okay.
Terry's correct.
Yeah, move number three to number one.
I'm in the right church, just the wrong queue, okay, where are we moving this to?
Number one under unfinished.
Anything else? From the agenda, changed, moved, approved, unapproved, all the above? All right, motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Say aye.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed, like, signed, okay. Number three, new business is now number one unfinished business. Did I get that wrong? Cut it, right, okay, cool. Moves us on to approval of the minutes for July 22, 2013, motion to discuss.
So moved.
Second.
Floor is open, any changes, deletions, corrections? Not, all in favor of the agenda as it is, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye.
Okay. Motion passed, that moves us on to committee meetings, planning, Beverly.
The planning commission has two new construction reviews tomorrow. One is at 3018 East Van Guren, and one is at 5 Center Street. Those are our new reviews for tomorrow. We do need your help in one issue. We received a letter from Chief Hyatt saying that Tim Weaver opinioned that the intrigue theater can operate legally as a studio, because studio, the definition of studio, has the word theater in it. If this is correct, and I will, you know, ask you for clarification on this issue, if this is correct, then planning definitely needs to work on the definition of studio, because, you know, we think a yoga theater studio, a dance studio, a exercise studio, we would not think that this is a studio. But if it's the opinion of our police chief and our legal city attorney, then we need to correct that. But we don't know for sure what the stance is, so I do need your help in that. And in my absence, planning voted to forward to council a multifamily dwelling ordinance. If you have received that, I would like for you to add it to the next agenda. If you've not received it, I will talk with them tomorrow about that.
Yes, go ahead.
Beverly, the council in your absence also passed the definition of a theater, and it was, I would have thought that that would have automatically came on to our agenda, and I do not see it here.
Planning.
Planning, I'm sorry, planning. And they passed, and they had a definition, they mentioned it, and they passed it, and referred it on, and it's not here.
Well, usually, you know, I walk everything through the process, and if they send something to you, I write it all up, I send it all to you, I give you the background. And in my absence, if they do stuff, you know, I can't help you. But I wanted to get clarification on what's going on with that theater before we just added more muck and mire to it, if it wasn't on your agenda already.
Well, I, okay, I'll save it for that point, never mind.
Anything else?
Okay.
Thank you. CAPC, I don't know, I don't think we had anybody here for CAPC. Hospital, no, parks, Bruce, okay. HTC or the cemetery, I think, or all those are without reports. Moves us on to public comments. Oh, I'm sorry, Smitty, yeah, come on up. Yeah, all right, takes us off of public comments, back to transit, yeah, sorry.
It was good to see you all this evening, come to talk transit with you, give you a little report of what's going on with us this year. We started out the year, March, April, and May, I was pretty scared, because numbers were down significantly. June 7th, it's like somebody turned on the faucet. And June and July have been blockbusters. In fact, we've made up what we lost the first three months of the season with the last two months of the season. In fact, July is the first month in season that our ridership has actually increased rather than decreased. So that's a good sign, that tourism has made a little bit of a comeback as the economy gets better, revitalizing, revitalization of the passion play, I think helps also quite a bit. So we're moving along as best we can, here answering any questions for you on that aspect of it. Also, this December, the group tour franchise expires. I'm going to send you another ordinance for your consideration. I want to increase the fees that transit keeps from the individual sales from 60% to 65%. And the reason I want to do this is basically get the condition of the trams. Doing some calculations, last three years, we spent almost $15,000 repairing the trams to keep them working. In fact, one of the three power units is not functioning at this time. We found we can operate with two just fine, so we've decided to hold off repairing that vehicle, it's going to cost about $4,000 to $5,000 to replace the mechanism that's broken in it. And basically, that comes to the issue of trams. I sent to the mayor a detailed explanation of the trams, how they're doing. The individual tours that we give at 1:00 and 3:00 o'clock for this year, up 18% from last year, which was up about 20% from the lot the year before that. People like these open-air tram tours. And I consider the tram tours an investment in transit. Because of my funding, the way it is with the FTA, I have to come up with a match. And after federal funding gets through, the state has the public transit fund, transit, which I get about $164,000 a year from that, leaves me with about $71,000 I have to find. And I get that through the parking revenue, I get that through onboard advertising, and they get that through the tram tours. With the advertising and the parking, that leaves me about $55,000 to $60,000 I have to find, and we get that through the trams. And without the tram tours, I would have to come to council to make up my operating expenses. So I consider the tram tours an investment to keep transit solvent, keep me from having the ding-dong, council, the help with operating expenses, because right now, I don't have to have any help. All I ask is for is the occasional capital expense. And if things keep going the way they are, I won't have to ding-dong you for that either, because the tram tours are really doing well for transit. And on the word of capital expenses, I submitted last May for some expenses, including two trolleys. I heard word back, they're funding everything except two trolleys, they're only going to fund one trolley. If you're not aware, there's a new transportation bill that came down the line, map 21, and they realigned the funding, so there's not as much for rural transit, which we're considered a rural transit agency because of size, the population. So I'm going to get one trolley this next year. Hopefully, if the year continues like it is, you know, I think I can, I can match those capital expenses without tipping in the city ledger, city accounts. Yes, sir?
Would, would you still be able to apply for another trolley next year?
Yeah, yeah, it's just wasn't the funding this year. They are talking about increasing funding for rural transit procurement. They admitted that they kind of made a mistake in that area, they didn't fund it enough. So next year, they are going to fund it more. But I did read today where the House and Senate, the Congress, did not pass a transportation bill. I'm not sure exactly what that was for, I think it was for mainly for roads and infrastructure, because their two houses were just completely far apart on exactly how much they needed. So they basically dropped it until they come back in September. As far as funding for transit, you know, the Obama administration believes public transit is important. Now, he believes that because of commuters getting to work, basically low-income and disabled people. We don't really have that problem here, because we're not a commuter-based community. We're here because of tourism, and we can take advantage of that for our transit system here, try and relieve the parking congestion we have downtown. Yes, sir?
This is just something my wife and I were talking about, Smitty. And I know Mr. DeVito has talked about it before, but have we given much thought, and where would it go, and how would we fund a parking garage structure for the city? And would that be a good idea?
I don't know where it'd go. I'd be up to the city to find room for it. If you're looking for federal funding, I really doubt that's going to happen, because it wouldn't be for transit purposes. Now, Plana Hill, we were able to fund with federal funds, because that was a depot for transit to go through, pick up docklot passengers. So if you're looking at federal transit money for that, no, that wouldn't happen. Where to put a parking garage downtown, your guess is as good as mine.
Ms. Schneider.
We've had three different proposals for parking garages, all of which I personally thought were excellent and incredible downtown on Center, I forget where the third one was, they all looked like these buildings, the voters turned it down. But they were phenomenal, and boy, if we had a parking garage, we could shut down Spring Street forever.
And you still have shortage of parking, for as many people who want to come down here, especially on a Saturday. It's bumper-to-bumper down here, and you still wouldn't have enough parking, you really wouldn't.
Anybody else? You hear anything else, Smitty?
I don't, I think I'm good.
Okay, thank you, sir, appreciate it. All right, that moves us on now to public comments. Number one on the list is Rosanna Stone. Yeah, they're going to be coming to you. I'm going to lock. Hi, Rosie, come on in, introduce yourself.
Hi, I wanted to talk today about closing off Spring Street, and that we really think it's a bad idea to close it off, especially after this past weekend, we had several customers come in our shop and state that they would not come back to Eureka Springs because they were lost, couldn't find their way around, and were rerouted to areas they didn't know. Also, the proposed arts council plan to close off Spring Street, remove parking, bring in vendors, and set up in front of the shops, there are other locations in which they can do this, that would be great for them and for pedestrians on the streets. The craft fair would disrupt Eureka's downtown, main and only through streets, business owners pay rent and utilities, insurance, and property tax all year. To bring in other vendors on an already busy weekend, to benefit from the traffic which we have all worked hard to maintain and keep going over the years, is unfair to all. The plan for traffic coming down Main Street alone would be a disaster. Visitors going north on Main, they would be rerouted to alternate routes such as Mountain, Hillside, and Grand, all of which are confusing, dangerous, and won't really take them anywhere. Some cars will be allowed through, but most will not. To accomplish this, almost every car would have to be stopped to determine their destination. This will cause a massive traffic jam on Main and Spring. The trolleys will be allowed to run up Spring Street with booths and people in the street. The New Orleans Hotel and the Basin Hotel will be shut off from their customers. The post office will have limited access for automobiles to pick up their mail. Emergency vehicles will have limited access, and also, a few people who will not collect city or state taxes can set up in front of our shops, take up parking space on the street, plus additional parking spaces for, for their vehicles and trailers and other locations downtown, which our customers really need at this time. The idea has been proposed several times over the years, and 90% of the shops are against closing the streets for any reason. It doesn't help our business, it hurts us, and it is confusing for visitors and residents to find new routes to get around Eureka Springs downtown. It removes what little parking we have and denies the opportunity for people who come to visit us to see our unique downtown area. So we hope that you will vote against closing off Spring Street for craft fairs. And I really thank you for listening today, and I hope you'll think about this issue.
Thank you, Rosie.
Thank you.
Ms. Jan Shipley.
Good afternoon, I'm Jan Shipley, and I'm here as the voice for the majority of the Spring Street residents who have voiced their opinion that they do not want Spring Street closed for the reasons aforementioned. We respectfully ask your consideration on this. Are there many other options, quite viable, and that would be much more suitable? We do appreciate your time, your courtesy, and your consideration on this. Thank you very much.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. Mel Shipley.
Good evening, I'm Jan's husband, she was just here. Yeah, well, shutting off Spring Street just doesn't seem like a logical or a good thing to do. It's a fairly narrow street to start with, and they're proposing a three-foot tent setup from the curb three foot out. If you do that, you take up exactly half of the street. Now, do we really want our customers, we want people to come to our town and walk in the gutters? That's what we're asking them to do, walk down a gutter. When's it going to happen? Is somebody going to stop, talk to an artist, take one or two steps back, his heels hit that high curb, we've got high curbs out there, down they go. We're asking people to transfer up a hill with, that is sloping down into a gutter, and we want them to walk in this and stay stable? Probably not going to work out real well. You're also going to end up with a lot of problems of having pedestrians try to cut across the street, going between tents to get to the other side of the street. Gets very, very visible, visibly difficult for some of our drivers to see that happening before we end up with a kid out there. It's a hazardous situation, it's the wrong location, and we've really got to think about this one before we enter into it. The second problem we have is I have a repeat business, it's chilly-chilly at the top of the hill, and we're at the very top of the hill up there before it's shut off. People are going to have trouble getting up to see me, they're going to be confused as to what's going on, and it's just not going to be a good thing. If you bring in a tent show, and you let people set up out there, there goes our tenant mix. Right now, Spring Street needs revitalization. It's beautiful, it's working wonderful. Everything that's there has come about through nutrition, nutrition being people that come in with things that just simply wouldn't work because there was too much of it. That's what happens when you throw in a tenant mix that just throws everything off immediately, it throws confusion into the shopper, and it's not good for the shop owners. Most of the people that are operating shops on Spring Street, I've done the count, have walked the street, we have the majority. Most of the people on Spring Street that run businesses do not want it. If you want to take a look at the will of the people, being the people that are running businesses here, they will vote to not let this thing occur. There are other places to have it. We need to explore those, or we need to find a whole different avenue to go. Mr. Mayor, I thank you for your time, City Council appreciates your time, your consideration. Good evening.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Margie Anderson. Yeah, Margie, then you're next, Joe.
Hi, Margie, come on in. Hi, Margie Anderson, we have a shop downtown. I'm here because I was at the auditorium three or four weeks ago, arts council wanting to put tents along Spring Street. Being a business owner, I am opposed to it. I think that we have a lot of other venues in Eureka Springs where this could go, I don't think everything needs to be downtown. I believe most of you are aware that Pine Mountain is suffering now, and I think the outskirts of our town is. The highway businesses aren't doing as well as downtown, we don't need everything downtown. We need to join this town. Years ago, everyone worked together, uptown, downtown, Main Street, Spring Street, and I think there's a division anymore, and everybody wants to be downtown, everybody wants to block the street off, and it hurts business. I love the Eurican, I want to see it happen again and again, but my sales were halved this weekend because the street was blocked. It doesn't mean I don't want them back, I think they're a fabulous event, but every time you take and block the traffic, or do something different with the traffic, it hurts the businesses downtown. And the ones on the highway are suffering enough, do we need downtown to suffer as well? I truly believe you need to join the community by putting this somewhere on the highway. And quite frankly, I'm tired of coming before you all on what you want to do on Spring Street. I've had the shop 24 years, and it's just, it's maddening, I don't even want to be here tonight. But I'm here because I want to ask you to consider, pay rent 12 months a year, pay utilities 12 months a year. Now, David and I don't have employees, because we work seven days a week, I don't think all of you do that. It's our choice that we're doing it, and I'm saying that when you do these things, it takes money away from your businesses who are collecting the taxes, who are paying your salaries, who help this town stay on the map. So I really would appreciate you listening to the businesses who are down here, and those are the ones that it's going to affect. If I have to rent three tents in front of my shop, I'll rent them. I think it's crazy, but if you want me to pay more rent on the month that you choose to do this, then that's what I'll do. Thank you for your time.
Thank you, ma'am. Joe Zickman.
How you doing? Good. Good evening, everyone, my name's Joe Zickman, I have a property on Spring Street, specifically 95 Spring Street, this is my 18th year of operation. And really, I'm not going to try to discuss the logistics of this challenging decision, because there are many, varied, and there's people on both sides of the fence supporting it. But what I'm here to talk about is uniformity, in that we all collect sales tax. And if you allow this activity to be conducted, you need to have them collect sales tax. When my wife and I went to teddy bear shows in other states, as a Texas resident, we would get a sales tax document from the person sponsoring the activity, we collect sales tax, and we give them a copy and remit ours to the state along with a check. And that's what you need to do. You also need to do that not only for fairness, but you need to do it so that you can determine if it's successful or not. How can you measure the success of an activity if you don't have some type of means to do that? Sales tax reporting is a means to do that. So these are the suggestions I would bring to your attention to consider. I appreciate your time, and good luck in this challenging decision.
Thank you, sir. Ms. Iris Fwitz. Is that, there you are. How are you? Oops, sorry, there you go.
Hi, I'm Iris Fwitz, and I have a couple of thoughts about artists and being out on the street, from what I canvass around with artists, that this is a past thing, they're not doing that anymore, they're doing it on the internet, it's not profitable for them, they don't want to do outdoor art anymore, the weather is iffy, so you're not going to get good qualified artists to be on the street. So that's the first point, and I, I really feel this is cutting like a dinosaur. It isn't working anymore for the artists, they can be much more productive in their studios and also in galleries. So things are changing as far as street fairs are concerned. There are some great ones, like in Akron, in Decatur, Georgia, in Ann Harbor, but they're big, they're old, they're 30-year projects, you know, people know of them, and they're going to visit them. The other side of what I look at here is that Eureka Springs is unique, very unique. You've got your architecture as art, you've got your gardens as art, you've got your springs as art, and you've got great shopping. And I point out to my shoppers that if you walk up 15 minutes up Spring Street, at least you will see 1,000 different American artists in our store. You may see duplicates of local artists, but that's it. The rest of us go out, find our own work, I'm leaving for New York next week, and we bring in work from all over this country. 1,000 American artists, folks, this town has art already, this town has beauty. We don't need anymore, we have it all, thank you.
Thank you, ma'am.
I appreciate your time.
All right, Ms. Karen Lindblad. And whoever W is. Karen Lindblad, oh, there you are, okay. Come around the corner.
Hello, I'm Karen Lindblad, I've had a business with my sister up on Spring Street for 37 years. We pay taxes to the city, we pay insurance on our business, we pay property tax, we keep our building in good order and our sidewalk in good order, and we have all the other expenses that businesses entail. We are now being told that there is a plan to not only put another business right in front of our store, but also that Spring Street will be closed off to traffic and parking. I have no problem with an arts and crafts fair, in fact, you know, we have this fabulous auditorium here that has a very big basement, and as far as an indoor venue, that would be a really good indoor venue to put, to have it, it's right in town, and, you know, could be in the basement there. But putting it on Spring Street is the wrong location. Every time Spring Street gets closed off, business just tanks, whether it's for a parade years ago, they used to take all the parking off from 9:00 in the morning till 2:00 in the afternoon for the parades, when we had a huge blues festival here, they would close the street off at 4:00. Business just drops whenever that happens. And I don't think that we can afford that right now with the way that the economy is. So I would say that, you know, I have nothing against the craft fair, another location would be great, but Spring Street is definitely the wrong location. And I didn't work this weekend, but my sister did, and she had people really upset that this weekend, they were detoured off to other places. You know, we live here, we're used to the streets here, we don't have parallel streets in Eureka. It's confusing. It's confusing enough for people when they come here, but for them to come here repeatedly, have their way to come into town, and be put off into a neighborhood that they don't even know is very distressing for them. And we also had a couple of people say they weren't coming back to Eureka. So please consider very carefully, and I would appreciate it if you could put this on your agenda for discussion, and if you could do some kind of legislation that does not close Spring Street off because it's too devastating for the businesses. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Number eight has a W by it, no full name. Is there anybody else out there which can make a public comment? If not, then we'll move on.
Linda Rogers should be out there.
Not on the list. Although I have as a W under number eight, so. But that's going to move us on to unfinished business.
Can I make a comment here? And I don't know whether this is appropriate.
It's point of order.
Okay.
Public comments, that's it. We don't comment.
Okay, so there is no way that I can clarify.
Counsel comments.
I can bring anything up.
Counsel comments or get it on the agenda.
At the end of the evening.
Yes, ma'am.
Because we've spent a half an hour on this, and it isn't even on the agenda. And I think it's on the agenda because there was a rumor that something was going to happen to this meeting, that they were going to try to put it on the agenda again, and I don't think it's fair to keep the downtown merchants in this state of anxiety over this thing all the time. And I would like to see this whole subject tabled for this session of this city council and not come to the table again until 2015. That's the way I feel about it because we're wasting an awful lot of time on this, and too many people are against it. So if that's out of order, so be it.
Added to the agenda.
This moves us on to number one unfinished business, which is the vacation of Rock Street. It's amended a while ago. All parties involved can enter the chambers.
Motion to discuss.
Second. Okay. Floor is open.
We should have Rachel Brich and her husband, and I would assume the director of Parks.
There's the director of Parks.
There's one of them.
Don't be shy.
Yes, they're here.
Is your counterpart out there?
Here's the other end right here.
Here's Rachel.
And Wade's right behind them.
Rachel, we need to go, we need to go ahead and stand up there so we can get this started.
Maybe I just need to get out of the way.
It's just a small, right?
I'll make a better door than I do with it.
Does that make a better door?
Yeah.
A better door than a wall, in this case.
I grew up on that.
It's my understanding that Rachel wants to give a short, brief presentation of the issue that she has taken to planning that was turned down at that time. So if everybody gives permission, we'd like to go ahead and let her speak.
Good with the council?
I'm going to start somewhere.
Yeah.
Would it be all right if I set something here?
Yes, it would be. Can the camera see that, Don? Can the camera see them?
Probably.
Okay.
Can you move?
I can move all the way over. Here, just move it over here, Rachel.
As long as Tim does the wing corner.
Okay, there you go.
Objection.
There you go.
Have they ever thought of having a meeting?
She doesn't.
Yes. No, that's okay. Come on. Oh, yeah. Here.
I probably won't need it.
I can't pick that one up.
That's okay. I'll work around it. I will work around it. If it falls off, I'm sorry.
It won't fall for me.
Oh, don't this. Okay. I am Rachel Brich, and this is my husband, Ryan. We live at One Magnetic Road and have already been to Parks and Planning requesting to vacate what has been referred to as a portion of Rock Street between blocks one and two in magnetic base survey. That's here and here, and here's a larger picture of it. Our house is here, and this is our property here. We would like to thank council members and the mayor for making the time to visit our property and for hearing us tonight and the request regarding our property. We have been asked why we are proceeding with our vacation request despite Parks and Planning's denials. My answer is, in order to avoid future problems, preserve, protect, and improve our investment and be able to make better informed decisions regarding our property. We have also been asked why not wait. My answer is, until when? When there's an attempt at a trail through our front yard? When there's an attempt of a road past our door? When there is an unavoidable need to sell? When there's a threat to the natural landscape? We've also been told that we knew about the street. My response is, we made an informed decision based mostly on documentation. One, our real estate contract mentioned no easement. Two, the seller's disclosure indicated no easement. Three, the title also did not reveal any easement. And four, our bank's appraiser wrote, quote, "There are no encroachments or easements on the property." It was only after we'd moved in that we learned of vacations. We initiated this conversation over a year ago, and we followed the procedures instructed by Parks and had our public hearing on June 17th, went to planning, and now we are here. This is according to the vacation procedures approved by Parks, Planning, and you folks earlier this year. We outlined several specific reasons to Parks and Planning for wanting to vacate. Those are as follows. Number one, the road is six feet from our front door and cuts our property directly in half. These are going to all be for you. Number two, it's the only legal access to our property. I repeat, it is the only legal access to our property. Number three, we pay to maintain it. Number four, the city has never used it in 120 years, and now it's for sale with no recorded plans. Number five, we own property on both sides. Number six, a new road, a trail, utilities, and our driveway cannot all occupy the same space. And furthermore, according to Planning's ordinance 2174, all utilities must be buried to avoid further unsightly conditions. And as you know from visiting out there, it's all rock. Number seven, the city has no documented plans for utilities or a road or a trail, and if a utility easement does exist, it's never been used. In fact, SWEPCO, Source Gas, and Duane Allen, our director of public works, have all supported the vacation in writing as having no need for utilities in that area and no utilities currently being in that area. Number eight, and finally, there is only one property owner in disagreement. I repeat, one property owner. Now I would like to briefly address items Park Director Levine submitted to you last week via email. Regarding Wright versus Monticello, municipal attorney shown concedes, quote, "A taking will not necessarily occur simply because the street is vacated. This will be a question of fact as to whether the property owner's rights of ingress and egress are actually extinguished." And a closer look at this case reveals the city of Monticello by way of ordinance took property from Mrs. Wright she had been deeded and then gave those rights to other individuals and excluded her from the ordinance. Of course, that obviously doesn't apply in our case, and no one else has been deeded or have recorded easements to our property. As far as Parks planned for a trail at this location, it's extremely unsafe for several reasons and is exceptionally intrusive. Ordinance 1628 gives Parks jurisdiction over all unopened streets according to public record, and even though our driveway has never been formally opened, it serves as the only access to our property and therefore has functioned as open for 120 years. Planning, in a close three-to-two vote, simply cited the vacation as not in the best interest of the city. Now to look at the 1893 plat map, which is still the main resource for all city planning today from 1893, it is easy to assume that our driveway is part of Rock Street. Here's Rock Street with these dashes right here, and then across into the next subdivision, this is our driveway and this grassy yard area of our property. Even the surveyor for the previous owner admitted that he made an assumption. However, numerous documents prove that assumption is incorrect. Documents from several credible sources, including the federal government, the local government, the Eureka Improvement Company, and a book researched and written by the executive director of our historical museum, June Westfall. In fact, Parks and the one objecting property owner are essentially the only ones who have called our driveway part of Rock Street and both want a city easement. Ultimately, this request originated as a vacation request, but I've been doing research for nine months. Research in its due course that has revealed numerous public documents about our property that prove the city does not own our driveway. Therefore, we are now before you to ask the city to please acknowledge lack of ownership and easement at our property. I would like to briefly describe the numerous documents I am providing for the city attorney's A federal land patent from September of 1884 deeds the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 10 to William Evans and individual, which includes our property. This is the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter of Section 10. Notice it was deeded to William Evans of Carroll County, Arkansas, and no one else. This was in September of 1884. Three months later, a patent was issued to the city, deeding it 320 acres. The crucial difference, and I guess I'll just point out one of the differences here, to Archimedes Davis, who was the mayor at the time, as well as, and this writing on, this person's terrible, "For the use and benefit of the occupants of said city." The crucial point of this document is that the 320 acres referred to in this plat are the north half of Section 15. That's this, north half of Section 15. Again, I'd like to point out that our property is up here. The city did receive property in Section 10, but it was never deeded the property that we now own. June Westfall explains, quote, "The decision of the federal land commission decided the question of priority rights in favor of the city authorities. There was, however, one important exception. Portions of Section 10 within the corporate limits were conceded to the agriculturalists," end quote. For example, and I brought an example, I have the patent here for the land that was deeded to the city, which is here and here, just to the east of us. And again, it reads the same way that the 320-acre patent reads, to Archimedes Davis and to the city of Eureka Springs. Ultimately, in tracing all of the deeds back to the federal land patent for our property, I cannot find an easement recorded with this property nor any documented evidence that the city has ever owned it. Furthermore, the restored Eureka Improvement Company survey, which John Cross tells me is from the 1880s, does not have this area drawn yet, and Rock, Maple, and Marble Streets all end at the section line that separates the northwest quarter from the southwest quarter. If you've ever seen that huge map on the wall in the Eureka Springs Museum at the bank, you can see that this whole section is missing, and it says Eureka Improvement Company here, la la la, it says all this other stuff, and this whole section is missing, and these roads end here, just like they end here on the plat map with the section line drawn all the way across. It was only later that this section was added, at some point between when the Eureka Improvement Company made their plat, and they added some other things and changed some other things when it ended up to be this 10 or so years later. He didn't know the exact date of the map, but he assured me it was in the 1880s. And this is the separation line from the northwest quarter to the southeast quarter. You can even see it here, too. That's the northwest section. Other city maps clearly delineate magnetic base survey as distinctly separate from Clayton survey, and most of us know that this is magnetic base survey here. I have a better drawing. This is magnetic base survey here, and this is Clayton survey here, and it is important and it is relevant that that ends there. Even the assessor's office acknowledges these subdivision boundaries, and the map in actually John Cross's office is where I knew that I had this from because it's right next to his desk. But anyway, so that's that. Yet another document, ordinance 91, you can see it's handwritten, it's ancient, it's from 1892, which is a year before this guy was done. The city council specifically describes the property affected by an improvement plan with special attention not to call our driveway Rock Street. They describe it this way, and I quote, "Southward along the east line of Block 10 to the alley east of Lot 7 in Block 10, Magnetic 40." This is Magnetic 40, this is Block 10, this is Lot 7, this is that alley. "Thence along said alley to Magnetic Street. Thence across Magnetic Street to the northeast corner of Lot 1 in Block 2, Magnetic 40. Thence south along the east line of said Block 2 to the south line of the northwest quarter of the southeast quarter. Thence along Rock Street." Now, if it was part of Rock Street, why would they go through all that trouble to describe it as not Rock Street? Why wouldn't they just say, "Across Magnetic, thence on Rock Street, down to the intersections of Rock and Vine?" I also have photographs from the, both museums and the library have obviously the same photographs, but this is from the 1880s, and this is grainy, obviously, because the cameras weren't too great. But you can see, this is hillside. This is the view from up over here somewhere where somebody's taking this photo. Here's Magnetic, it's hard to see, I got a little bit better of a picture 10 years later. And this is Main Street here. You can kind of see the driveway, there's a shadow there, and it goes up around the house that's obviously there, which is exactly where our home sits today, and comes around and goes up this way. This picture from around 1900 is a little bit easier to see, and those of you who are out will remember that rock wall up in our forest that you can see now. Here's the driveway again, coming up the same way around that house that's still there and coming up here, and you can actually start to see the split now in this photo because the quality of the cameras got better. And here, for example, is just to show you from last year, a picture on Google Earth from the same, approximately the same location. Here's the driveway again, coming up and around the house, and of course, that old timber road has since grown over and faded from a long time ago. So that kind of shows the progression of what it looks like. What it shows is, is that our property and the driveway were already established and existing long, since at least the 1880s, and recorded history points to even earlier, before the town site survey in 1879, before the city's incorporation in 1880, before the Eureka Improvement Company moved in and platted the lots and blocks, and well before that 1893 plat map that our city still uses today. Finally, this logo map here illustrates the existence of an old timber road, not a platted city street. And I juxtapose these two things so you could see the difference. Notice, this is the same area. This is Main Street here, this is Magnetic Street here, this is Main Street here, this is Magnetic Street here. Here's our driveway, here's our driveway. Notice that this follows what the photographs show, is coming up here, and then here, though, it doesn't continue straight down as Rock Street would have you show on the plat map. It goes up and into, if you can't, you probably can't see these, but these say out, 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 outlots here, continues to here, and then it spreads out at some exact point, I'm obviously not sure. But what it shows is, is that it's not part of Rock Street, and it never was. In conclusion... Thank you. Based on the abundance of compelling documents and the wealth of recorded history of Eureka Springs, it is our position that the city does not own or have easement through our property. We are asking the city to please acknowledge in writing the lack of ownership or easement at One Magnetic. We've shown you federal patents, we've got the deeds, we can show you the deeds, the deeds are public, all of this is public record, actually, that's how I found it. Several plats, several maps, ordinance 91, the separation, the obvious separation of the subdivisions, photographs, recorded history, and I mean, these are eight things, but this one, this one, this one, and this one have several documents with them that help corroborate this information. The only thing the city has on record is the assumption that on this 1893 plat map, that these two things are connected. And I would ask you to please consider acknowledging in writing the lack of ownership in our property. Thank you.
Thank you, ma'am. Questions? Mr. Mitchell, head your hand up first.
If I ever need legal research, I know where to go.
Yeah, here in the wrong business.
Excellent job. I commend you for that. I guess I'll hold my comments until we hear from our director of Parks.
Ms. Snyder?
Just wanted to clarify one point. The only thing that shows their driveways, Rock Street, is a private survey that was done, and those of us who are long timers here know how well these private surveys have worked over the years.
If I may, I did meet with the surveyor because I wanted to know why he put Rock Street on our survey, and he said he assumed that, we met up for coffee at Moon Street, and he said he assumed, and once we started pointing things out and explaining to him all the things I've just explained to you folks, he was kind of baffled, actually. And I have a letter from him. I had to go to his, I'm sure he doesn't want to really admit that in writing, but I had to go to his place of business and track him down.
Bruce? You'll have to come all the way around, or are you going to use your dimmer?
Sorry. I'll... Sorry.
Just sit around back here, right here. Yeah, lift your fingers.
Musical chairs here.
Good evening, everyone. I'll pass out what I think I sent to everybody, someone might already have a copy, if you don't, just pass it along. It's the ownership map of that area. Now, I'm afraid that I cannot speak to the legalities of when the various surveys, all I know is that as a city, we've always looked at the 1893 plat as being the delineation of our streets, and one of the things on that, on the plat map shows a fairly grand entrance to what everyone assumed to have been Rock Street. So you'll find many of the streets, some of the big streets that are unopened but are platted, will have those larger entrances. It doesn't show up well on that, but it shows on the one that Ms. Bricks had showed, that there's a fairly distinct entrance, as if it was coming in from both ways. I think it's a fairly good assumption that it's Rock Street, but again, I may be wrong. The first thing that I think everyone should know about green zones, platted, unopened streets, reserved right-ofways, whatever you'd like to call them, is they are public streets and they're public property. Be it a jungle, a bluff, or someone's driveway, it's still a city street. So much so, that if an obstruction of any kind, a fence, a porch, a deck, even a planted tree, if it's planted on that right-ofway, the city has a legal jurisdiction to have removed what's sometimes called an encroachment. And I quote from 1454-104, "To punish, prevent, or remove encroachments or obstructions upon any of the street's sidewalks, wharves, or other public grounds of the city, whether by buildings, fences, or structures of any kind, post trees, or any other matter or thing whatsoever." And the reason I bring that up is because a city street, be it unopened or opened, is still a city street, and the city has considerable powers to, and jurisdiction over that street. Please remember that the street was platted first, the objects that are in close proximity that are, or that are located on that street are encroachments. Anyone who's a landowner can certainly understand the frustration of discovering that your backyard or on your property there exists a green zone, and you're not aware of it, and the issues that arise from their very existence. A platted street that is unopened is not peculiar to Eureka Springs. It happens all over the state and all over the country, there are unopened streets, and they're called various different things, reserved right-ofways, unopened streets, what have you. But again, this city's property is city property until it is no longer required for public purposes. That determination of corporate interest is made by this body. I should point out that this property has had the benefit of two alleys that had been vacated because there was no corporate purpose, and there was no opposition from anyone in proximity or parks or planning. One of the primary functions of these streets is to provide access to property, hence the reason we hold public hearings with notification of adjoining property owners to be assured that the vacation request would not deny or restrict a neighbor's access. In this case, the adjoining property owners have acreage they wish to access by this street or maybe run utilities. Much of our discussion with municipal attorney David Schoen dealt with the various methods by that the city council may vacate property. Mr. Schoen's opinion is that the city may vacate under 1454-104, which you will be considering here. And that is, quote, "to alter, change, or wither extent of streets, sidewalks, alleys, avenues, parks, wharves, and other public grounds, and to vacate or lease out such portions thereof as may not for the time being required for corporate purposes." The statute mandates that the council shall determine whether the streets should be vacated from the standpoint of public interest and welfare. That would certainly include the interests of affected property owners. In addition, the city should be advised that extinguishing a right of ingress or egress will be considered a taking of property for which compensation is due, even if alternative access is available to the property owner. And that's right versus the city of Monticello. And that, I think, was one of the major points that the parks came about. As I said in the email, the parks could not consider recommending something to council that would put the council in potential litigation. And then secondly, about the trails, the Model T rolled off the line in 1908. Our streets were platted in 1893, fully platted. Our assumption would be that our streets were platted for horses, horse-drawn carriages, and carts, and pedestrian use. While a trail through the woods may only be considered a recreational use nowadays, it should be considered as an access. This access is not only an economic benefit to our city, but also a health benefit to our residents and visitors. Now, if you look one more time at that map, at the provided property map, you'll notice the many, many streets that are in yellow, and those were all vacated in the year 1976. Now, if the city had a review process like we do now 30 years ago, we would probably not even be having this discussion today. Some of those streets would have stayed open, and they would be available to us for access and for trails. But here we sit, and we have the last street in that area that we're aware of that will allow us to have a trail. Thank you.
Thank you. Yes, go ahead, Mr. Mitchell.
I just have some questions on access, ingress and egress for the particular property that we're discussing. There is, there is access on Magnetic, that's the major access, it's an improved access. And actually, there's, you can access it from coming down Magnetic or going up Magnetic. The portion that you would access going up Magnetic has not been maintained over the years, so, but it is a cut in the hillside there. Also, we show, and this is just a question, we show that this trail here, Rock Trail, Rock Street, comes over to Mill Street, I guess that's Mill Hollow. Is that not also an access point? For Marble Flats LLC?
That trail, that's Rock Street.
Yeah. Is that not, is that also an access point?
Oh, coming in from Mill Hollow?
Yes.
It would be a rather long access point, I think it's...
Well, I mean, the property's fairly extensive.
1,162 to the other point, but that's not really mine.
Well, I'm just asking, that is an access point, so it could be, something could be cut there. And the city owns that property in green, right next to it, just to the, as you're looking at it, just to the left, correct?
That's the parking lot at...
That's the parking lot, behind the art colony?
Art colony.
Okay. So, there are, and then if we include what we are currently calling Rock Street from Magnetic, that access point there, which I, after listening to Mrs. Bricks' presentation, I have some question regarding that as well. But, so that, that tells me that there are potentially two. There's one really good access point, and then there's two that are, even if you came up Rock Street, you still had to cut that one, too, as well, if you went up the way it was, it's currently laid out in the plat, correct? I mean, you'd still have to cut, because it's inaccessible as a, as a, right now, actually, the drive is very, very steep and very, very narrow, and if, you know, you'd virtually be cutting their front yard off, and then you'd have to repair the rock retaining wall there that supports that fill material there that actually acts as their driveway currently right now. So, my point is, I think there are three access points. It's a big area, and so I think that needs to be considered in this whole discussion.
Well, the only thing that the parks commission considered was that Mr. Schoen said that you cannot, the way we understood it, and I have to grab it to quote it, but, any access, it doesn't matter if it's not the only access. That's what Mr. Schoen told us.
Well, okay, I'm not a lawyer.
Me either, that's why we have Mr. Schoen.
But, you know, to me, it just seems, it seems like we're beating up a couple here that whether they knew or not, and my own experience moving here to Eureka Springs has made me realize that not everything is revealed when you purchase a piece of property. So I can understand how the Bricks feel about this.
Asking on.
It's, I just, at this point in time, I really find, I have a big issue with telling somebody, "We're gonna, by the way, we're gonna make a roadway here at some future point in time, and we're gonna take all your front yard, and we're gonna be four feet away from your door." I mean, I have a big problem with that, especially if the house has been there for 100 and, 100, you know, over 100 years.
And the street's been there for 120.
And the street has been there possibly, don't know for sure, but possibly prior to any of the city plats and the plating. So I just have a big issue with that.
Sure, well, I think the only thing that the parks concentrated on again was what our advice was from the municipal attorney, and we can double-check with, with Mr. Reeger that, and again, here's the quote, that would certainly include the interests of affected property owners. In addition, the city could be advised that extinguishing a right of ingress/egress will be considered a taking of property for which compensation is due, even if alternative access is available to the property owner. And that's what we went on.
Okay, I'm not going to argue this, I want to continue with this question, Mr. Mitchell, I'll turn it over to you in just a second, but the, this whole issue requires some sort of give and take, you know? And if, if the owners of Marble Flats say, "We're not going to give an inch," and the Bricks say, "Well, we're not going to give an inch," then nothing's going to get done. So there has to be some sort of compromise here, is what I'm thinking.
Mr. Mitchell, go ahead.
Question.
Ms. Snyder, I'll get you in the main, you don't have to hold your hand up.
Question for our attorney. After listening to Mrs. Bricks, please weigh in on this now.
Having not looked at her documents until now, but having reviewed what Bruce has just told you and looked at the court cases, you stand, if you cut off this access, to the city paying Marble Flats for that access? And that is an inverse condemnation, would be, and that would be determined by a jury how much you have to pay if you cut off, and that's a legitimate access. And whether it's a legitimate access or not goes back to her documents and back to the history. I don't know at this point. I don't think the council's in a position to know right now. But if that's, if, from the looks of it, it has been across there the whole time that house has been there. And if the city has claimed an interest in it that long, it's very possible it belongs to the city, at least as a right-ofway. It may as a complete unopened street.
So at this point, advise council on how we...
Let me finish, let me finish.
Advise council, sitting at this table, what we should do. Should we put this on hold and then refer it to you to pick it up legally and research it to find out if that is a street or not?
As I understand the situation, the only one at this point that is wanting to do anything is they're saying, "Give us that piece of property," or say that you don't own it. So technically, I don't know why this is an issue that the council has to necessarily deal with, because no one is out there with a bulldozer getting ready to cut a wider road across there. They're not trying to sell the property or build something on that piece of property. The issue's not ripe to have to be decided.
But, whoa, wait a minute, just...
I mean, it's been 100 and some years that that's been that way.
Let's just don't kick this down the road. I mean, oh, so it's all of a sudden it's not an issue? Well, she's gone to planning, she's gone to various places to bring the issue up and to deal with it, and it came to this table as a legitimate issue, and now you're saying, just because it's just one person, just ignore it?
It's not just one person. It's the city that is being placed in jeopardy of having to pay money to satisfy one person. The interest of the city is what the council is required to look after, not the interest of one citizen. And if, if you have to look at it that way as being immoral or not addressing all the issue, then you may have to do that. But you are placing the city treasury in jeopardy if you close off and a lawsuit is brought that is successful, saying that that cut off a property right of the company.
If we took action, I didn't ask you to take action, I said, what is, what about researching it to find out if her point of view is true or not? And you, and then you seem to imply, no, just let it go, because it's been that way 106 years. I'm all for protecting the city, nobody should ever, ever doubt my intent of protecting this city. But at the same time, we have a citizen who came here with a legitimate request, has researched it very well, and has raised a very interesting point, and my question is, are we going to look at her point or not?
I don't think you can get a legitimate, complete answer without a court acting. And you are inviting the lawsuit to be placed against the city if you take action. If you take no action, any action would not be for damages or money if she wants a declaratory judgment that that property belongs to her.
Ms. Snyder, you're next.
Okay, I had a couple of points, and now it's an extra point or two and some logistics. Marble Flats does not, contrary to their beliefs, abut this property. Yep, it does not abut. In view of that, they don't have a leg to stand on in that regard. The biggest thing that has me really having problems, and I spent a lot of time with Bruce discussing this, I've done a bunch of research, I spent a lot of time talking with them, because I've seen this happen so many times here in 40 years. The biggest thing to me, and going through those old, old books that are so fabulous and are such a pain, when there is no easement named, there is no easement, the very minimum or the easiest maybe thing that we as the city could do is to abandon to the public use the supposed, what's known as, Rock Street. That means we have no future plans on roads. Now, that gets us out of the loop, avoids any lawsuits, but it still leaves that property in question. Now, if anyone in Marble Flats, be it the present guys or whoever they would sell to, want to go ahead and develop, we're talking an arm and a leg to put a road through solid rock. Ain't gonna happen. But if they want to, fine. In the meantime, the Bricks, you're saying they're not going to build a house, have you asked them what their plans were for that, where the road supposedly goes through? She said it's four feet from her house, you couldn't build a building on it anyway. Yeah, no, where it goes from the front of the house all the way up...
Yeah, no, where it goes from the front of the house all the way up. This is a big, huge, beautiful yard. You could do five tons of stuff. So by saying, "Well, you're not gonna do anything, so let's just leave it," eh, to me, I kind of believe in the nine tenths of the law.
I'm not, I'm not saying that it has to be left alone. She can bring an action for declaratory judgment.
Right.
And she wishes to do that.
Or they can. That's the point. But my point is, logistically, nothing's ever gonna happen to get us out of, out of it and out of the way of any lawsuit. We can just declare that we're gonna abandon it to public use. That's very simple to do. It's like vacating without vacating. You can do that, well, similar enough. You can do that at the same time, if 10, 20, 50 years from now, one of the two property owners wants to do something, then they're gonna have to prove beyond a shadow of a doubt who has a road, if it's there, or not.
Mr. McLoughlin.
Mr. Mayor, at this point, I think the only question that needs to be asked is to counsel for Marble Flats, and is, and the question for him is, should the city approve the vacation of Rock Street? Would they sue the city?
I'd go against vacation.
Mr. Williams, you wanna come up to the mic, please? Just introduce yourself to the record.
I'm Wade Williams. I'm counsel for Marble Flats, one of the property owners that's adjacent to Rock Street. To answer the direct question, I've not been authorized to draft a petition at this point in time. However, it's my understanding that if access is denied, that in all likelihood, there would be a lawsuit filed against the city. Mr. Mayor, if I, if I may, can I address a couple of other points that have been made?
Absolutely. You've got the mic.
There was just a discussion about vacating for public use. I've been practicing law 23 years, never heard of such a thing. The law with regard to vacating a street is very clear. It's set out in statute, and if you vacate a street, you vacate a street, and it goes to the adjacent property owners. The procedure is very clear, and I think that we're all getting caught up in our sympathy for the situation of the petitioner. They've got a road in their front yard, but when they went and looked at that house, to buy that house, they had a road in their front yard. Whether they availed themselves of the situation, or their opportunities, excuse me, to review documents that are available and make an informed decision at that point in time, I don't know. According to what she said, they didn't. But to anyone who has walked out there and looked at the property, which I think the city council, for the most part, has done, it's very apparent that there is a road six feet in front of their yard, or in front of the rock wall. There are a number of things that have been presented today that I do not think you can rely on, and I'm not trying to disparage anyone, but the fact remains that when a plat is filed, whether it's the original city plat or a later city plat, the filing of that plat in the public records creates a dedication of the roads, whether it's explicit or implied, a dedication of the roads to the public. This land, then, is within the city limits of Eureka Springs. Maybe it wasn't originally, but it is now. Whether they were dedicated expressly or implied, they are now within the city limits of the city of Eureka Springs, and they belong to the city. We had a long presentation about why you should accept that they are not and just indicate that you don't have any interest in the street. But the city's gonna have to deal with this in some fashion, because the area in question does belong to the city. There was also some discussion about that this is her driveway, and it's not really Rock Street. Well, she's not asking you to abandon her driveway. Whether the surveyors got it right or the surveyors got it wrong, Rock Street was platted on the Bay's magnetic survey, and it exists through there, and it's an area that can be determined. If she actually is asking you to vacate the area that is her driveway, and then also is arguing that that's not Rock Street, then her petition is fundamentally defective, because she's not even asking you to vacate what you're being asked to vacate. Ms. Bricks is very well spoken. She's got clients over here if they ever need legal research, and all of that, I mean, I admire the work that she's put into it. There is no question that she had the ability to determine the status of her title at the time she bought the property. The plats were of record, the road's been there for over 100 years, and all of that, if you actually even just look at her deed, it says that it's subject to all the easements and right-of-ways of record. That plat is of record. Closure of the street itself is gonna constitute a taking, to go back to your question, and under the Constitution, and according to what the municipal league attorneys have said, that raises the opportunity for Marble Flats to bring cause of action against the city. All of that's been addressed previously, and it's something that the city probably should take into consideration. But this really comes down to one issue, and it's very, very straightforward, and that is that, under the statute, there is one basis upon which you can vacate a street, and that is you determine that it is in the public benefit to vacate the street. Ms. Bricks, again, very well spoken, has stated eight specific reasons why you should vacate the street, but not one single one of them had anything to do with the public benefit. Public benefit has not been mentioned one time until I did. There is no public benefit to vacating the street. Your representatives that have spoken have actually indicated that they see a public benefit in maintaining that street. And obviously, Marble Flats, as a property owner, is opposed to the vacation of the street. Marble Flats may be just a bunch of platted lots today, but it does represent the opportunity for urban infill down the road. I don't know what the possibilities are with regard to that property, but it's something that exists within the city, it is platted, and it does exist, and we cannot deny it.
I'll get you in a minute.
I'm sorry.
Okay. You don't want to ask any questions while he's talking? All right. Mr. DeVito, you have next.
I have nothing for Mr. Williams.
I do.
Go ahead.
They aren't asking for a vacation, they're asking for a non-ownership. Big difference. And have you looked for easements to prove or disprove their side? Just out of curiosity?
Once again, the plat of Bay's magnetic survey shows Rock Street.
The newer one?
No, the original plat.
I don't think so. That's not how I read it.
Okay. The plats that she was referring to are not the one that platted the subdivision that we're talking about.
Yeah.
That was a subsequent subdivision, and it's shown on, on these, it was subsequently incorporated into the larger map that constitutes the large map that we have in...
So you're saying Sections 10 and 15 have been incorporated?
What do you mean? They're part of the city.
No, no, no. Have they been put together?
No.
Okay.
Sections 10 and 15 are still separate and distinct sections of land.
Totally separate, okay, okay. So, I have yet to be able to see any easements in regards to the Section 10 belonging to 15 or leading to, or however you wanna put it.
I'm not sure I understand what your question is, but once again, the presentation that was made earlier today...
Okay, I'm saying the newest thing where it says Rock Street was the newest thing, not the original paperwork.
I'm not sure what you're referring to as the newest thing.
The assumption on the private survey, this is what I'm talking about.
From, from two or three years ago?
Let's just say, I can't even think of his name right now. But what I'm saying is, there was no easement showing, there was no Rock Street showing, there was none of this showing in Section 10 originally. Not that I've been able to figure out that that's what that's supposed to be.
And, and again, it's, I'm not sure I'm following exactly what you say by originally.
I'm saying we don't have an easement.
Once upon a time, there were no roads in this area whatsoever.
Right.
There were then plats filed that created the city of Eureka Springs. And subsequent to that, there have been additional plats of other areas that were not originally platted. The area that we're talking about, while it may not show on the original survey of the city of Eureka Springs, that does not mean that when it was subsequently platted, it did not become a part of it, and the streets did not become public. The law is very, very clear that it does become public when those plats are filed. Honestly, whether they're in the city or not, they become public roads and public thoroughships.
The 300-plus acres that was donated to the city, when those were finally platted, I don't recall seeing an easement in the other section.
When the Bay's magnetic survey was platted, Rock Street was extended out to magnetic.
I don't suppose you can show me on any maps we have here, Daniel?
Well, I mean, it's on, it's on every survey that you look at.
I mean, I'm looking at, I'm thinking this old one. Yeah, I know, I'm looking at that. But that isn't going by the original.
Well, in, in the original, there were...
I don't know, I don't know how to word this right.
Yelken, I ain't disappointed, thrown that long, but you're not gonna go anywhere with it.
I don't know how to word this right.
And we may not be communicating, but, but the bottom line is, there is a platted street that exists. It's not an easement across anybody's property, it is a platted street.
Okay, that may be the difference that we're talking about here, then.
Mr. Burton.
Mr. Williams, does Marble Flats have any plans to develop anytime soon, to your knowledge?
I'm not privy to any specific plans at this point in time.
I spoke to Mr. Bland about that, and he indicated the same. And my question to the Bricks were, was, you know, if there's no immediacy to this, you know, could, you know, could this thing be kind of dropped or put aside? And I think she feels that there's, that she wants to rectify this and just, you know, find a solution somewhere, so...
Well, I can say that the, that Marble Flats and the representatives, representatives of Marble Flats have indicated a willingness to try and open any sort of discussion that Ms. Bricks and would like to have. The, the problem is that we're not having that negotiation. We're being asked to essentially consent to the vacating of an access point to this property. That petition is supposed to be predicated on somehow the vacating of this road being in the public interest, and there's been nothing presented whatsoever to show how this is in the public interest. Your representatives have indicated it is in opposition to the public interest with regard to their various departments. It's been denied by Parks, and there was a presentation made as to their reasons, it's been denied by planning. Both of those representative bodies vetted this and determined that it was not in the, in the public benefit to vacate the street.
Well, to continue with that, and not to belabor it, it's getting a little late, but this is a very important subject to the Bricks and to Gene and his partners. It just seems like we ought to have a discussion here between the two parties, not us, the city council, but, but y'all, you know, and, and see if there's some way to kind of make the Bricks feel reassured that they didn't move to town and, "Oh, by the way, we're gonna plow right through your front yard when we put a big 50-house subdivision up here," which, that's probably not gonna happen. But, I mean, the main access, and maybe I should ask you, Gene, have you thought about development of this property and would the, the magnetic road, the further up there by the Passion Play entrance, Cast Entrance, would that be more, would that be your main access, you would think? Are you thinking that...
I don't think we're willing to say what our main access is, 'cause we don't know what our main access is.
Well, that's what I mean. So you guys really haven't planned anything out? There's no platted subdivision or anything?
No, but it's, it's been brought up that the Bricks owned, and they were given a deed to this portion that we referred to as Rock Street. That is not true. That is not true. Their deed is for these lots. It's for, and I've got a copy of their deed, if anybody would like to see it, but it does not include Rock Street, never has included Rock Street. It was platted by a gentleman in the name of H.G. Savage in the year 1885, August the 27th. And that's when the plat, Ms. Snyder, was filed, that you see on the map up there, Maze, Magnetic Bay Survey. And if we go by that, Hillside Avenue is not shown by name in Bay's McSeddy Avenue, so I guess we do away with those up there. They said that, you know, there's only been one person, you know, the people that tore this, the three people that wanted to vacate it, one person joins at 16-foot, and that's the people that own Main Street down there, and they have 143 feet or 173 feet on Main Street. They drive off Main Street, not off Rock Street. The people at the ice cream shop, wrote a, I think the name is Dunham, they don't join Rock Street anywhere, so I don't know what that was about. Have we tried to solve this problem? We, all four of my partners, met at the property with the previous owner. The previous owner did not, did not show up at that meeting. I told Mr. and Mrs. Brick with Mr. Bonch out here at the last meeting we had, would be willing to talk to them. I have not heard a word from Mr. and Mrs. Brick. So we've tried to work on this, and I, James, I, you're tired of hearing about this, and so am I, you know? But, that's our access.
All right, let's, let's kind of spread it out here. Ms. Ella, go ahead.
Well, I, I have two questions. My first question is, what kind of money are we talking about here? What is our policy for compensating someone when we vacate a street? Is it per square foot or front foot or per acre or what?
Mr. Williams?
We have, it seems to me we have some kind of a policy.
If it is a taking, we're not getting any money. We would be obligated to pay them what is fair market value, and if that could not be arrived at between the parties, it would be arrived at by a jury. And a jury might very well do exactly what a jury did in this town about 20 years ago and valued a piece of property about three times, I think, what Mr. Bland had valued it at originally. I'm not sure it was three, but something along that line.
I wouldn't bother to ask that question.
I think you were, but if I, if I've misquoted, I will, I will take that back. It was a local Realtor that had come up with that. So you'd never know what...
The jury did do four times what the pressure said. Four times.
I was thinking it was five.
Stop, stop. We're getting way off track here. Let's get back to what we're gonna do.
You can't determine what the value is, is basically what I'm saying.
Okay. I'm not, I'm not finished yet. That was my first question, is are we talking about an unconscionable amount of money here? Because that hill, I've looked at it, that hill has never been an access. Now, when this was first presented to me, I was told that that was the only access to that property, and if it were vacated, the property, Marble Flats, would become worthless. Now, this is not true. There are all kinds of accesses to Marble Flats that are more desirable, and I question whether it would be in the public interest to allow a road to be built on that hill. That hill is just about solid rock, and it is, it is within the city limits of Eureka Springs, and I'm not an engineer, but I, my common sense tells me that it's not possible to put a roadbed in there that would support any kind of heavy traffic like construction without blasting, and you cannot blast within the city limits of Eureka Springs. So, I would say that, that if we're talking about public interest, it is in the public interest of Eureka Springs to make sure that a road is never, that nobody ever tries to build a road on that hill, and the way we can make sure of that is to vacate that property. And especially since there are already rights of ingress and egress to the property in question, the Marble Flats at the top of the hill. But I am willing to doubt whether anybody has ever accessed the top of that hill anyway except on foot. I don't think there's any vehicle within, that's built, that can go up that hill, and I don't think you can build a road on that hill without blasting. And that's all I have to say.
Okay, I want to direct my questions to the city attorney. We're not required to take action on this matter. Yes or no?
No, I don't believe you are. And if the Bricks are unhappy with that, they could bring in action that would not necessarily involve the city coffers as far as compensating anybody for a taking.
So, we're not required to take action on this matter, and we're not the final arbiter of this matter. The courts are gonna be the final arbiter of this matter. So there's a lot of information we don't know about, there's a lot of subjective assessment of plats, surveys, and such. I don't feel it's within the best interest of the city council to address and make a decision on this matter. It's going to ultimately end up in the courts. I would rather see the Bricks and the parties involved try to come to an amicable settlement. I think I've heard interest on at least one party to go that direction. I don't feel we have to make a decision on this. It's not in the best interest of this council to decide this matter tonight. It may well ultimately end up in the courts. I hope it doesn't end up there. I hope the parties involved can sit down together and try to establish a solution for this. I think... I think we're just spinning our wheels here. I don't think we're qualified to do. Ultimately, a judge and a jury are way more qualified than we are to decide this matter. So I think the best course of action for city council is to do nothing.
Mr. Mitchell.
I'd like to relinquish my time to Ms. Bricks so she may respond.
Okay, let's get Ms. Snyder in real quick.
To comment and then a question. Okay, we are talking about private land of theirs, private land of y'all's. How does the public interest come into private land, number one? Number two, can we, as the council, in view of the confusion of the situation, what is and what isn't, and so on and so forth, can we order both parties to sit down and try to come to a compromise?
No.
And--
No.
Okay. I was afraid of that, but what I want, I want to see them sit down with you or another experienced, new-ful party who understands and stuff, sit down, see what kind of compromise can come up before we make a decision on, do we own it or not? Do we vacate it or not? See what I'm getting to? So if they can come to a compromise before we make a stand at some point, if we even make a stand, is there anything we can do, guys, to get both sides together, working on a compromise? I got a compromise out of parks yesterday. Just can we get a compromise or an attempt at a compromise?
I'll make a motion at this time to take no action on this matter.
Second.
Yeah, well, we can't take an action until you guys--
We have a motion on the table in a second.
Hang on a second. I'll get it. Yes, ma'am. Yeah.
Can we discuss?
Go ahead. Get your piece in, you want to speak.
I would just like to address several points, and I'll be as brief as I can, and I know that this is difficult, and I apologize for the confusion. But I did state in the outset that what began as a request for vacation has now turned into something different. I'm asking the city to acknowledge it does not own our driveway. I'm not asking the city to say that we do. I'm asking the city to say that they don't. That's all I was asking for. And as far as our deed, our deed does not say at all, subject to easements on it. It doesn't. The survey shows platted Rock Street, but our deed doesn't say that. And our title, someone said, I think it was Mr. Williams, "I had the opportunity to investigate my title." Have any one of you investigated your title? Isn't that what a title search is for? No, of course not. I mean, we did our due diligence, we got the, we, easements of record, easements of record. There's no easement of record for this property. And I'm curious, Mr. Williams keeps referring to Bay's survey that was platted, and then it was connected as Rock Street. Do you have--